Roll call, please.
Mr. Dietrich?
Here.
Mrs. Donahue? Mr. Elling?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Knopf?
Present.
Mr. Coke? Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
I'm here.
Mrs. Smith?
Present.
Seven members present.
So our presentation this evening is on the hometown ticketing proposal. So as the athletic directors are coming to the table, gentlemen, you're going to need the microphone, the handhelds that are back on the big tables. Do you got one? So this proposal was shared with the Curricular Co-Curricular Committee last month, and it was determined or agreed upon that we would just bring the whole proposal to the full board because there are some information in the proposal that impacts the ticket prices, which are in the Athletic Handbook, which is also up for approval next week. So we felt that maybe the full board should have some understanding of what we piloted last year at one of our high schools and why we'd like to move this proposal forward to both of our, well, actually, all of our athletic events. So I'm going to turn it over to gentlemen. Remember, three people have seen the full, you know, proposal, I think, or two, three, maybe, and we'll field questions.
Sounds good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. As Dr. Martin mentioned, we're here to go over the hometown ticketing proposal. The purpose of this is to streamline the process, not only to help our families, Keystone Central School District families, but also to help streamline the process with the Business Department. As Dr. Martin mentioned, Central Mountain High School successfully piloted this last year, and it was also, Michael talked about, some of the PIAA regulations that they do as well.
So as Stephen talked about, Central Mountain did successfully pilot this, not only for sporting events, but also for dances and many other events that they had. With all PIAA sports, when you make it to playoffs that require admission fees, basketball, the softball, when you make it to a certain place in districts and other items, PIAA requires hometown ticketing. They won't allow any cash prices at all or any cash purchases at all of their events. It was interesting to see because one of the key things that we worried about was did Bucktail have enough access to be able to do that successfully? And we were able to do that to get our fans all into those events and had few hiccups. I know that there were a couple of people that were worried about fees and things like that, and that's what we're going to bring up as part of our proposal to how we're going to address those.
So, absolutely.
Get back to page two, please, Ken. Back to the second page on the introduction. Did you fix that? Couldn't it be Keystone Central Athletics, not Central Mountain?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. A little particular about stuff like that.
So as mentioned, we are going to change some of the process. There's going to be, there's going to be no charges for any type of fees that are involved. It's something that when we did pilot at Central Mountain, there was, I believe it's 2.9%, which you'll see in one of the slides, is what is charged for each time somebody buys a ticket. We're proposing that Keystone Central School District takes on that fee, and in turn, what we'd like to do is actually offer free tickets to our Keystone Central School District students with their student ID. The only exception, the only exception to that is, you know, elementary-age students will have to be accompanied by an adult.
So as we're looking at those opportunities for the students to come in free, what we're hoping to do is improve our attendance at all of our sporting events and make it more of a school-wide community event, having more fans there, more parents coming and so forth to really make it exciting for our student athletes and our community as a whole. I think that that, not passing the fees on to our consumer, be it our fans, is a really big plus for them, and it makes them feel more like they've been able to spend the amount on the ticket.
You don't mind going forward, Ken? So this is just some data that was collected in terms of how many hours and how many people touch cash on a daily basis during the fall and winter season. This is the information about the fees, and we did, we did talk about and discuss, you know, some of our elderly population and things to that nature. We do still offer the Gold Pass, which is for 65 years or older retired individual, 62 years or older, for individuals that are retired can get a free Gold Pass to come into any event. We're also planning to host some open houses and things like that to be able to get people to come in. We'll print off tickets for them and help them work through that process. We're also going to purchase credit card readers for the gates to be able to take the credit card and purchase tickets at the gates. There's also will be a QRL code that will hang up that people can use their cellphone to purchase at the gates. And we'll have individuals that are actually helping our community through that when they come, if they haven't already pre-purchased.
How are you going to do visiting team person that comes in and says it's a student that doesn't have a credit card? Are we going to come? I know down at the Bucktail St. John Newman girls' basketball game, I know a gentleman that walked in from Bucktail that had a hard time getting in before I could walk and pay another person payment because he didn't have a credit card with him.
I'm glad that you brought that up because we're actually going to be communicating this out to our visiting teams, that they'll be able to pre-purchase the tickets and not have to worry about it at the gate, that kind of thing. So that'll be part of the communication that we have to all of our visiting teams, making sure that they're well aware of what to expect when they get here. We actually try to do that on a weekly basis anyway with our visiting teams, what kinds of things to look for and so forth with their events. And this was actually a planned item, that we're going to get that out to other people. We are actually not the only school district doing this. There are several around the state, as you mentioned. St. John Newman is one that's been changing some things about how they do their attendance into the games.
Is there still a cash option for those situations?
Especially for this year, we would like to continue with the cash option because that way we want to see how everything is working. That's one of the things that I talked about. The other thing, too, is when you look at the safety and the amount of time in counting the cash, getting the cash ready, getting those boxes, it does turn out to be quite a bit of an amount of time. The other thing is, at the end of an evening, when it's getting 10:30 at night, things like that, we still have somebody out there with the cash box that has a lot of money in it, and we want to try to avoid those kinds of situations, too, and increase the safety for our workers.
The good thing with the hometown ticketing program is that it does have a point-of-sale system that we were, technology was so graceful to be able to give us some iPads already, where we'd be able to, you know, put in a sale, cash sale right there, so we can have accurate depiction of who's all at the game and how many tickets are being sold. So that's a good plus as well. So as you'll see here, there's a QRL code or a spot to be able to purchase tickets in advance, and then there's also no changes to any of the prices, except for the exception of the KCSD student will be free with their student ID.
So really, in summing up, what we want to do is, we want to, as I said before, make this a community event, get our parents there, get our students there. We want to make sure that we're helping with the community. They have this option to get these tickets earlier before they come to the game. They don't have to worry about anything at that point. They just come in, show their QR reader, and move right into the game. So I do think that these options are very exciting for us. It does streamline things, both before the game, during the game, and even after the game, too, with our ticket takers and workers and so forth.
And in conclusion, something that we also talked about with Dr. Martin and the Co-Curricular Committee was the fact that we'd start to be able to work with some principals, PTO members and things to that nature, to try to really celebrate some of the things that our students are doing, since they'll be able to come in free. We'll be able to have some big events at football games and basketball games and such to really highlight school-wide positive behavior and some of the new programs that we're doing. Do we have any questions?
The gold cards, is that going to be like you have now a physical card? Or is it going to be something that's going to be electronic that you keep on your, like your wallet on your phone?
No, yes, sir. We're going to do the same. Yep.
So will they be purchasing these through an app or?
They're going to be able to purchase them a number of ways. They can do it through an app. They can do it from their computer in the comfort of their home, print it out, save it on their phone. They're going to be able to, we're going to host those open nights where we have a printer set up where we can help people maybe get season passes and things to that nature so they don't have to, you know, go through all that. And then we'll also have that point-of-sale at the gates.
So, Mike, are you going to get this word out to everybody, how this change in this system? I mean, I think it sounds good, but I just, I'm curious about how, you know, you're going to get the word out to parents and so on, that they're going to be able to do this.
So we'll be making this word through our social media accounts and so forth. One of the things for Bucktail is a lot of people pay attention to those Bucktail Booster Facebook pages. So I've been working with them even more this summer on getting some things onto their Facebook pages. I've been seeing a lot of results with that, getting a lot more information and things like that that they've been able to see. So we're going to do that. We're going to make public announcements. Blooms app. Yep, press releases. So I think that's what we'll be looking at to get the word out. And in reality, too, we'll be able to, once everything goes through its final approval, we'll be able to do word of mouth through our student athletes already that are playing in their sports. I'll be able to get that to their coaches, and Stephen will be able to do the same thing.
Mike, I think, I think on August 8th, you're doing some kind of open house in conjunction with the Herdard Park. You're planning on doing something there, maybe they have a demonstration how to do it or?
That's a little before the final approval, next week's voting meeting. But, and we won't be on our site with access to our internet services and so forth. But what we can do is we can start saying, hey, look, you know, there's going to be a voting meeting on this Thursday. This could be something that's approved, and then we'll get some more information out to you, just to give them a heads up.
One other thing.
Just a heads up there, I believe that Ms. Lynch was having some problems hearing the board member who was speaking. Just a reminder to those present in the boardroom, please speak into the microphone when you can.
Okay, Bo.
The last thing I will say is that our new websites that we launched last year have an option to buy tickets right from there. We are also launching a brand-new Central Mountain Wildcats and Bucktail Bucks team app that will be available at the Apple Store and through Google Play, where fans will be able to buy tickets right from the comfort of their home, right from their phone.
Liz?
Question?
I was hoping you were going to and also add the comment that you made or question you had from the committee meeting, if you remember.
Oh, the part of no fee eventually, is that?
Yeah, or why are we charging at all?
Right, right. Well, first, thank you, Ms. Martin, Dr. Martin. First, I want to thank the committee. It was an excellent, excellent, excellent working session, but this just popped into my head, and then I'll go back to that other thing that she reminded me of. It just popped into my head. If you're at a place where the Wi-Fi is out, does that make a difference for this at all, or can it all be through satellite phone or?
Well, for, I know especially for Central Mountain Technology already installed some boosters. They did that for us last year, so we had better access to Wi-Fi, but you can do all this right through the data on your phone.
Okay, so it won't impact the folks working at the ticket stand or anything if, for some reason, the Wi-Fi goes out?
No, it won't. The other thing, too, with Bucktail, I can say that there's boosters set up also, and those were put in place, too, when we started live streaming so many events. I know the Renova Record wants to continue with that.
Great. That's super terrific. And yes, during the committee meeting, there was just a very short discussion on, should the district consider ever not charging for a ticket price, at least for the folks that live in the district? So that's something that's sort of out there. Any feedback from other folks, the community, anyone at the district? I know our committee would be very interested in learning more about your feelings on that. But thank you both so much. It was a super terrific presentation and good graphics. Thank you.
Our response to that at the committee meeting was, you know, we thought about it, too, but we also weren't ready to give up the revenue that was coming in. We thought that we'd try to see how this plays out. It's somewhat risk-free because the money that does come in from the revenue goes into our general fund and gets pushed out as surplus. It's not being used directly to fund something, so it wouldn't, you know, if this doesn't work out well for us and it decreases the funding, it's not really hurting any programming. So we weren't ready to go to nothing, and we had piloted it at one of the two high schools, as we said last year. So we were prepared to move forward with keeping the admission rates the same, absorbing the fee, reducing the number of game workers needed, and also adding the free tickets toward the students. I think many of you know someone in our community who has a family where they have a student athlete, mom, dad, come bring the siblings, they're charged the $10, you know, $5 for each adult that comes, and then, you know, $3 for each of their own children to come watch somebody play. That could add up across the season for some of our families and does create some hardships. So we thought also it might encourage some others to come out and support our programs, and that's something that the students had asked me about in 2019. They said, we want more people coming to our events, and I think this helps encourage what the kids asked for quite a long time ago. So hopefully you can support it. You're not really voting on the hometown ticketing itself, but the fees being the same and waiving the student fees is actually reflected in the Athletic Student Handbook, which is a change from previous years. So we want to make sure you were aware of it.
And Ms. Lynch, I would also add to your prior question regarding, you know, Wi-Fi availability at the various athletic venues. This board previously supported a major wireless upgrade across the entire district, and I believe that all those venues are now covered. And, you know, my brother in bits and bytes, Chad, if he's on the call, could tell me I'm wrong, but I do believe that we have them all sufficiently covered. The ticketing program will work no matter where we're at.
Bo, just to let you know, Chad's back there shaking his head yes. So it's been done.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I don't believe we have anybody signed up to speak this evening, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We are actively preparing to welcome our students to the 2022-2023 school year on August 31st, when our students return. Student schedules, class lists, and bus information is being finalized and will be released very soon. I believe the bus mailings were being sent out today, at least stamped today. We're especially looking forward to meeting the incoming kindergarten class of 2035. In preparation for the start of the school year, our administrative team and other school leaders have been participating in professional development across the summer months. A few of the topics include crisis response, threat assessment, educator wellness, QBS, which is a de-escalation techniques and prevention and management for behaviors, restorative practices, which is also aligned to our most recent behavior policy, and a lot of time on multi-tiered systems of support for academics, instructional strategies included in that, along with behavior, tiered supports for behavior and tiered supports for social and emotional wellness. Another training that occurred this week for our administrators and our secretaries was focused on our new communication tool, Blooms. And so we learned how to access the different ways of the app. What are the settings, the privacy settings? How do we get people involved? And uploading groups and all kinds of other features, how to attach things? And so it was a brief training, but very informational, and I know that the secretaries appreciated being included in that, as they'll be actively using the app once we get the school year underway. Along with the administrators, elementary teachers have been training in our new math programs and developing curriculum in many different other content areas. I know I didn't mention everything, but the administrative team is here. Are there any other trainings you'd like to highlight, things that our teachers or staff have been doing this summer that I didn't already mention? It's a lot. There's been a lot going on. I know Special Education, you have some new trainings coming up for some of the new programs, too, but that's coming up in two weeks, right? We had a... Nope. You might have to come up here to one of these.
Had a training in June for a handful of folks who were available during that time. So the remaining members of our learning support and emotional support teachers will be coming in in mid-August for various trainings in corrective reading, corrective math, reading mastery, and basic math concepts. And we will also have a training on essentials of algebra. So we are rolling out all new curriculum, K to 12, and we're very excited about it.
So those trainings are directly related to the curriculum resources that the board approved earlier this summer. I hope that folks in our area are able to get out and support the Keystone Central Foundation fundraiser night golf tournament. This event will be held at the Clinton Country Club on August 13th. If you're not a golfer, you can consider joining us for dinner and an auction at 6 o'clock, while the golfers head out onto the course at 7:45 PM. I know there's limited space available for foursomes, about two more spaces, two more groups can join. So time is of the essence if you want to get a team in. And that's all I have.
And for committee reports, the only committee that met was the Curricular Co-Curricular. So Elizabeth, would you like to give us a brief rundown on what you did?
Okay. And please, Megan, Dr. Martin, I'm just, we have the minutes, Section H3 in the agenda, so it's very, very well-written, easy to understand, but I'll just speak of some of the highlights. The group worked incredibly hard on all these drafts. You're going to eventually see them.
They're on tonight's agenda.
Hmm, excuse me?
They're on the agenda tonight.
Yes, yes, but not the consumer.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That one, that one. But yes, thank you very much. But one thing I just wanted to highlight is, and I'm giving Stephen Heffley a lot of credit for this because he expanded on his own journey to where he is today. And if this is just a concept, just a concept. If we ever did anything with one of the health classes, sports nutrition for the CTC program possibly in the future, because that might lead a student to go to something else in that realm. So that was, to me, super exciting to hear Stephen's take on that. If there's any questions, or Dr. Martin, Megan, if you'd like to, you know, go into some more detail besides what's in the minutes, please, I encourage you to. Thank you.
I would just say that the Family Consumer Science Curriculum was developed by our teachers, led by Megan Hall, and we brought the first draft to that committee, and there were some suggestions and a lot of questions. And so they've sent us back to make some changes, and then we're going to take it back to the committee. Our hope is that we would bring a full Family Consumer Science Curriculum back to the full board sometime in the next few months. And then the handbooks and the hometown ticketing proposal, the student activity handbooks and so forth are things that, there were some suggestions by the committee members. Those changes were made, as far as I know, and then those handbooks were resubmitted. Patty, I think you helped make sure the changes that were requested were added before we uploaded the new ones. And because there was so much reading, we agreed with the committee that we would send it to all of you in advance so that you had more than a week to review. And we also talked about an update. We were somewhat concerned earlier this summer about the number of students participating in football at Bucktail, but it seems that our numbers have come back up, and the panic and the alarm is over. So that's good news for everyone. And that was pretty much the extent of the meeting. It was a pretty lengthy meeting, and Roger was hangry.
Whatever.
That didn't make the minutes, though.
All right. Yes, Elizabeth?
Oh, no, I was just saying, thank you. Thank you. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to reports. So far, we just have the treasurer's report. Are there any questions or comments on that? Just a reminder that there will not be an enrollment report this month. And then moving on to board, we do have our emergency operations plan to be approved. And then somebody asked about the PCCD, the Mental Health and Safety Security Grant.
Yes. Chad, since you're projecting for us, there's an attachment under that on the board agenda, if you wouldn't mind projecting for us. So many of you are aware that we, when the governor's budget was passed, that there was, we received additional funding that we were not counting on, but it was definitely nice to have. In addition to that, there were two PCCD grants awarded, and those grants, one was for school safety and one was for mental health. And if you go to the next slide when you're able, yep, that's the right one. This was, this slide just shows you what our final budget was that were approved and what amounts. And then these numbers aren't different from what you've seen before. So if we go to the next slide, the state revenue that came in, green is good. Green means that we got more than we expected in those areas. The basic ed subsidy went up by over $1 million, and the special ed subsidy was 266, almost 267,000. Career and Technical Education subsidy was up 241,054. And then the additional grant funding is really what the focus is on this evening. There's a physical safety grant and also a mental health grant. Each of those were the same amount. These were non-competitive grants from the state. So here's the award amount to each district was announced, and with that, they announced it in mid-July. Susan and I both took some vacation time in the end of July, and the grant window opens on August 1 and closes on August 31. So it's a fast turnaround of how we're going to utilize these funds, and they must be spent within the 22-23 school year. So not a lot of time for decision-making and pondering about ways to use it. The, we had some preliminary meetings before the end of July, and then today was the first time that we were able to get the administrators together that would be involved in any of these levels of grants. I did get some input from our entire administrative team on what their thinking was and how they feel these supports could be utilized. As far as we know, these are one-time dollars. There's no guarantee that they would, we would get anything like this in the future. So we want to be very cautious about how we are spending the dollars. So the physical safety grant, and the way this was set up was that for each of these was a tiered system where there were research-based things or strategies in school safety that, you know, were first level. And then the second level would be a little, you know, better than the first level, and the third level being better yet. You could not use the funds for something in a Level 2 or Level 3 unless you already met everything in Level 1. While we have a lot of the things met in Level 1, we do have some projects that we're working on in this upcoming school year that already meet the parameters of the grant and would allow us to utilize these funds. So the facility committee, these things are going to sound familiar to you, but not to the rest of the board, maybe. That is the door replacement process that we were allocating. Process that we were allocating in our budgets. About a hundred thousand dollars a year for door replacements and projects. And we were going to replace only so many each year until they were done. Well, with the remaining doors that need left remain to be completed. That would be about 118,000 dollars for the the doors. We are, we had a need that came up to fence in the playground at Renova Elementary. And we have been working and we have gotten some quotes and worked on that. I think the board already approved that project. That project is actually eligible under this grant. So we'd like to move that $30,000 project to this grant. And additionally, a new need has come up at Woodward Elementary about fencing in that playground. We've moved an autistic support. Program there. And it's also my understanding that under a safety audit, it was recommended that so there was some closure. So the students didn't have direct access to the woods. Or people coming in from that way. So we're still working on getting quotes. We have looked at what does that project actually entail? How big is the fencing? What is the material? We haven't gotten there yet, but we would like to include that project under the physical safety grant. We believe that the Woodward fencing project will exceed. The total amount of the grant and we may have to use some of our facility capital funds to finish the project. Or to, you know, offset the cost, but that pretty much expends the 162. We think we can get the doors by doing them all at once. They're obviously cheaper this year than they're going to be next year and so on. And we know that that was a concern. And under the safety grant, it basically talks about having a one point of access for safety. So and having doors that cannot be barred or locked from the inside or accessed from the outside. So we believe those projects fit the best there. For the mental health grant. We have been doing a lot of things in the tier one levels that were described in the grant criteria. However, one of the areas we've been working on, and I know this board listened to a presentation a couple of months ago. About positive school-wide behavior, positive behavioral intervention support PBIS. And we've been doing a lot of training in that area. And one of the things that continues to come up for our principals and our buildings is the capacity to help carry out these. Programs and the training and just direct working with the students. We tossed around a couple of ideas about mental health providers and services. We want to expand on that, but those things aren't costing us any money. Some of the outside providers are doing that for free. So that was our first choice, but it's not costing us anything. So in some brainstorm work today with our team, our, it wasn't the whole administrative team. One of the ideas that came up would be to look at adding the possibility of four to five support staff members. Into our buildings that can help with the check-ins and checkouts of students can help. With the restorative practices and some of the other new initiatives that are going on with our positive behavior support programs. They would be, basically what we're picturing is that the positions would be utilized for one year only guaranteed for one year only. Only under this grant, but because we know, and they would be support staff. If the board thinks that this is a. Good use of the money, what we'd like to do is come to you with a job description. Next week, so you could see how that position, those positions would be used. We've been cautious about how to add, you know, how are you adding staff if you don't know that you have the money later? We felt more comfortable doing this within our support staff area because annually we have a huge turnover in our support staff. And so we feel pretty fairly confident, very confident that if we're not going to support these positions in the future. That we would have room for the employees to to be in other positions. Do we have any idea how many support staff positions or aid positions we hire in a year? Liz, I don't know if you have, it's more than four, isn't it? It's well more than four.
Three or four on this.
Yeah, it, it, there's a constant turnover and there's those positions. So we felt that even though it would be addition of four positions. If we did not receive additional funding for the following year and we didn't want to fund it through the general fund, that we would not be obligated to do so financially. So the reason we're, I really am open to discussion and ideas from from the board. The other options for the grant had to do with the SAT program, increasing counseling services. Increasing the number of nurses, increasing the number of school psychologists. Social emotional learning curriculum. We have it in our elementaries, but not in our high schools. But we're not ready to do that curriculum writing yet. That's starting this school year with the health and PE folks. And so we felt that the most pressing need was really under the area of. Plus adding those other staff, we would be committed to them. You know, those aren't positions that typically turn over. We also talked about contracted services through an intermediate unit, but one of the things we rejected that for was because there's a fee. You know, you lose some of the funds to a fee. And we thought that this way we could put it directly into employees. So Susan, I don't know if you want to add any other comments to, you know, that was the thinking that we had today. And again, it's a quick turnaround.
Would they be more like a highly qualified building assistant that we're looking at?
I would think it would be equivalent to a personal care aide in pay, which is, I think, the seventeen dollars an hour. So we calculated that we think with these dollars we could access possibly four. Principals are probably gonna start jockeying for how many they're getting or who's getting them. But we believe that that additional support in the building, additional support on bus duties, additional support in the cafeterias. Which is the areas where the many of the behaviors are. You know, occurring, the misbehaviors are occurring.
So if we have four positions, how would they be shared among the buildings?
Well, they would be assigned to a building for the year. We wouldn't want to rotate people around because it's just kind of inconsistent. And part of our idea is that they would build a relationship with the students, just as they would if they were, you know, a permanent staff member there.
So are they all going to be elementary or?
We, we tossed around a couple of ideas. I think we'd have to use our behavior data and look at the number of. Criteria and things. We did specifically talk about the fact that at the Bucktail campus between Renova Elementary and Bucktail. Because Brett's assigned to another building that are every other day, or there are some days. That there is not an administrator directly present in that building. So maybe some additional support on that campus. Potentially being shared between those two buildings. Obviously, our middle school has a higher population. The high school has a high population. We do have some. We have a facilitator at Robb Elementary, but we do not have additional support at Mill Hall. And we have some pretty extensive behaviors there too. So we have not determined exact placement and the principals are hearing this for the first time.
What, what type of qualifications would, would you be looking for in these people? I mean. I would think you'd need someone with some, some degree of education.
Yeah, so Jeff, you might, it's, I kind of feel like you might have been in our meeting, but you weren't there. That was some of the conversation, I think, that Mark and Megan specifically spoke to. And they said, you know, not just anyone can do this job. It's really somebody. Who has a great rapport with students. And so that's why, because my, my first thought was, can we just use the, the existing job description? And the conversation that we had already said, maybe we need a specialized skill set, but it falls within that realm. And that we would then do a job description and then conduct interviews for folks that would want to apply for those positions.
Yeah, I would think you'd needs, I agree, you'd need some, if you're gonna put them in that kind of a position of somebody that's gonna have a. Be able to have a good rapport with the kids and. And whatever.
With that, what can turnover that we're having now, are we gonna have any trouble filling these positions?
I think people will fill these and then we're gonna have to backfill the other positions. But as I've, as far as I know right now, we have every. Position filled in the aides and PCA is correct. Thought that's what Lisa told me. We have one. Okay. The walk-in Wednesdays have helped and the promotion has helped. I've talked with some people that said, I saw your, your flyer at the Robb Elementary School. On the playground fence and I thought, you know, I've been looking for something. Let me go see what they have. And so we, we have, there's a possibility we won't be able to fill them all, but. We, we have everything filled but one now. I think the pay raises helped.
So, so there's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that needs to be spent, right? Am I understanding that?
A hundred and sixty-two for that grant.
I mean, I mean, over, overall, it says to be determined eight hundred.
Yep, we're gonna, that's a different pot. The safety money has to be determined by the 31st. The rest of it does not.
Oh, okay.
And we would like to, thanks for bringing that up. We would like to schedule a finance committee meeting. And talk with the finance committee about our recommendations and what the finance committee believes would be a way for us to utilize those funds. And.
I think I have some thoughts about that. Okay.
And we figured that many of the board members would. We, we talked briefly about it today. We know how much money is left in there that isn't in a specific fund and we have some ideas, but we also want to hear from the board and the finance committee or any members of. Any members of the board, which is kind of the whole committee.
My thoughts are kind of safety related as well. I'm thinking, do we have an ambulance at our sporting events?
Yes.
Purchase our own ambulance, have our own paramedics. What I've, what I've, what I've heard multiple times is that our local ambulance services can't really provide the services that.
What they're finding is they can't find certified folks. So we're working with them on some ideas to help get certifications.
Pay them more than.
Maybe.
I'm not sure, but yeah.
I, I think we're open to.
Complaints about the ambulance services. So I'm just wondering if we can do something on our own too.
Okay, well, I think, who's our finance shares at you, Butch? So I think that would be wise for board members to send. Ideas, which is why I prefer if you just copy the whole, you know, the board and myself and Susan and Mark on it, just because that team of ten plus. Plus two kind of keeps everybody in the loop with everyone's thinking. And sometimes one person's thoughts might trigger some ideas or thoughts from someone else. But I think that would be a great idea if you could email them, you know, to the.
So these are all just safety related things or?
So there's a couple of different things going on. If we go back to this slide. Could you go to the previous slide, please? Thank you. So you see the increased monies, the thousand. Under basic ed, special ed and career and tech. And then you have the additional grant funding. Right now I was speaking just to the additional grant funding, the, and then. The one sixty-two, nine seventeen times two comes out of the 1.9 million. The remaining dollars, we need to decide where to, what, what we want to put that, what accounts do we want to put that in? And so that then goes to the next slide. Which says. We know that already some things that we spent since we balanced the budget. We had the secretary MOU and the support staff MOU. And those costs are reflected on the screen for salary and benefits. So there's still an additional eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-one that we need to decide. Where are those dollars? What, what budget categories do they go to?
And that has to be spent before the end of the school year. Is that correct?
Correct. And we, we're not on a deadline to make that determination. You know, it's, it's revenue in, but we just need to decide. I, I'd like to be transparent with the board. When we get more money, where are we putting it? And I'd like the board and the finance committee to have input on where it goes.
I just have a favor. I would love to attend the finance committee. So just please, whenever that's decided, just shoot out an email with the link and the date and the time. I'm gonna try my best. I think it's gonna be a fascinating discussion. This is, this is great news. Thank you.
We do that for all of the meetings and I will just mention that Butch did ask for us to get one scheduled for August 2nd. But there was no way between Susan and I on vacation that we could be prepared to do that. So we, we apologize that there was no way. And at the time, we knew the allocation dollars, but we didn't have any detail. On how the grant or the timeline, we weren't even sure if it opened on August 1st or closed on August 1st and we first got the allocation. So tonight's biggest conversation is around the fact that we need to get started on that grant application. And so what I'm seeking is a little bit of direction or affirmation from the board. For us to start the grant and submit the grant by August 31st. So the line item on the work session agenda. Is you approving us to apply for the grant. What goes into the grant depends on the grant parameters, but we want to again be transparent with you about how we want to spend the grant. I feel truly confident on the safety pieces because those were dollars that we've already spent and we've identified as needs in our district. And their one-time cost, so to speak, and it frees up money in the out years. I'm a little concerned.
Dr. Martin, since this slide is up right now, and we're talking about this, the safety grant here. The physical safety grant. I, I just want to bring up, you know, I'm totally in favor of the exterior door replacements. That has to happen. The playground fencing I know needs to happen. But I do worry about, you know, at the places that we're installing this. Is this going to be isolating us from the community where these schools are? To the point that, you know, we're building a fortress where, you know, not, not only can nobody get out. And no bad actors can get in, but in after hours where the community is accustomed to being able to use that playground. As, you know, part of their, you know, normal recreation. Is that, is that going to be a problem? And at those schools, are we gonna get pushback? That we're now locking people out of district facilities?
I have to jump in. I'm so sorry, Bo. Thank you for bringing that up because I, I was gonna ask that we could talk about this in the next facility meeting. Is we're doing these upgrades, the track, et cetera. And there's a lot of folks, now I shouldn't say a lot, I'm not gonna say that word. There are people in the community that use the football field when school isn't open. They use the, the track for walking in the morning. Or after work. So if we could talk about that, at least the facilities committee, what these fenced scenarios. That would be, thank you, Bo.
So make a note to add that to the agenda. So Bo, thank you for bringing that up. And I, I do recall some of those conversations with some previous playgrounds. The playground fencing that we selected at Renova Elementary is really more. To protect students from running into the traffic areas and there are exterior gates that people can access. In addition to the playground fencing, the PTL at Renova is very generously paying for some new playground equipment there as well. And so there are many families who use, utilize that space in the evenings. And it is our intention to leave that gate unlocked so that they can access that without climbing over the gate. And so, and it is not a chain link fence. It's, it's more of a vinyl fencing that looks more aesthetically. It doesn't look like.
That makes me feel better. I mean, you know, the, the way that it was described there kind of made me feel like we were building some fortresses. And I don't think that's the business we need to be in. I don't think we need to be building fortresses right now. But, well, yeah, during school hours, maybe we have to, you know, given the situation in this country and so forth, but I won't get into that. But, you know, after hours, I would, I would really feel that it would be a disservice if we're locking people out.
Yeah, and I think, thanks for bringing that up. I guess I didn't think of that point of view because we had talked about the fencing and I, I knew the context of the need. We have added an autistic support classroom at Renova in the last couple of years. And we do have some students who are considered a flight risk. Even though they're adults with them, sometimes they can, you know. Escape or take off and it puts them at, at risk for running into traffic. And if you're familiar with the Renova Elementary Center, the playground is on the side of the parking lot. And there's a lot of traffic that circulates around there at different times of the day. So we really felt it was more of a safety issue for students in, but again. I, I think it's, it's an allowable expense and we think it fits what we're doing. Did you have questions?
I understand. If it was about keeping people in, I'm good. It was about keeping bad actors out when we're in school hours and so forth, I'm good. But, you know, after hours, I really hate to do a disservice to our community and I don't want to be locking us out.
I don't think any of those, any of those projects you're talking about. Will keep people excluded from the community, especially after school hours. I mean, especially, we, we saw the one up at. Up at Renova Elementary and it's, they would certainly have access.
That's what I was gonna say. When we had the facility tour, we brought that up about the fencing. We looked at how it's gonna be laid up or laid out. And there's gonna be plenty of access for people after school hours to get in. So that was one of the questions we had during that tour, Bo. The, the way it was laid out, I think it's gonna work fine.
Yep, okay. Well, that, well, then I'm totally in favor of it. I just don't want to see this be another repeat of. What we've had at Robb Elementary where the community went bananas because we effectively locked everybody out. And they didn't like the, the high fences and the signs.
Or like the one at.
Or the one at Dicky.
Dicky, yeah.
Yeah. So the, the behavior health support staff. That's, that's the one that we, we've kind of, we tossed around a lot of different ideas and in most of the areas in. That we, we. in most of the areas in that we, we meet tier one, two and three. Like I said, with the, the counseling, the nurses, we're, we're in good shape in most of parts. It's, um, the social emotional learning, which again, the curriculum writing that needs to be done and the professional development pieces there. There was another piece that we were, um, looking at. I forget what was that? There was some professional development that would come out of there and then the other, or we could look at the staff, we would look at different, but I don't know how we're going to spend a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars on professional development in one year, knowing that we already have the title two monies. And we have the S R funds, which also has a social emotional learning component. So I, knowing what we need right now with our PBIS launch, particularly at the secondary schools. Elementary's been launching it. I, I just feel like this might be the best support for our principals for one year, but we would have to know it's not a guarantee in the following years.
With a hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, seventeen dollars, find four positions.
Yeah. In our calculations today, yes.
With.
It's salary and benefits at the seventeen dollars an hour.
And Peasars contribution, it'll take care of all of it.
Depending, there was a couple of depends in there. Um, it depends on if the individuals use our insurance or not use our insurance or take, you know, the payout. So it's close. We'd have to probably, if we're going to go that route, we'd probably have to make sure with our regular gen, gen ed budget, we had a contingency line item for salaries. We may have to use some of that contingency to round out the four. There were some other ideas tossed around. I'll, I'll let the board know, but we didn't know, we didn't think that the board would support them. We talked about the addition of, of a facilitator. Um, but we also talked about the addition of some additional administrative support. We did not believe that, um, the board would support adding any administrators or professional staff, knowing that we wouldn't be able to um, attrite them for sure next year, but we felt more comfortable if we could get four people. Um, who could take on some of those same tasks that we know happen on a regular basis currently with some of our support staff members and other, um, folks. Adding the additional coverage to the high behavior areas and getting four people, um, we thought was just a better use of the dollars. And we felt that we could probably garner some support for that as opposed to adding an administrator or another teaching position.
Just, I'm not in favor of hiring any additional staff. I think you and I had a discussion the other day. I think we have to start watching and continue watching what we're hiring.
But if they know that these are just going to be one-year positions.
I understand. I'm, I just, I, I'm still befuddled on how you can get four positions at a hundred and sixty-two thousand. That way it doesn't.
So was this, Susan, do you want to speak to the calculation?
Yeah. So their school term only positions at seventeen dollars an hour. So I think on average, and I say it was around forty per position on average. If they take medical, there's a lot of ifs in there. You have to see what it shakes out once they're hired.
So that's if all four take the medical and worst case scenario, basically.
If it's medical with family or?
No, it's, they only get single coverage.
Only get single coverage?
Yeah.
By the time the grant gets approved, we're going to be probably into September. So it wouldn't even be the full school year.
At school term personnel are not, um, eligible for family coverage. They pay for the additional coverage if they wish to have that.
Elizabeth, go ahead.
Yes. I, I, I really appreciate the, the arguments for the, the positions and I, me personally, I completely support them from what I've heard, what, you know, we've known in the past. Um, I just want to hope that it, the, the pay scale would be high enough that we're going to get real professional people. And that they're not going to be, I hate to use this word, um, the babysitters. So I would rather have, this is just from what I've heard. I'd rather have two highly trained people that they have to be paid more than just someone who's going to be like assisting and helping. So professional versus helper. Um, I don't know if seventeen dollars an hour is really reasonable, but you know best. And I'm looking forward to the discussion at the finance committee, but I, I have a hundred percent in favor of helping these students get mentally acclimated and at the right place. And I think that's desperately something that we, we can never, how many people, I mean, we wish there could be more people to be honest with you. So thank you very much, Dr. Martin. Excellent presentation.
I'll be, I'll be interested to see the, uh, what the job description, how it is written with these positions.
So I haven't had a chance to ask the principals, but I think maybe this is a good opportunity for the board to hear from any of the principals who think that they could, what that support would look like for you and how do you think it would help?
Yeah. I'm just curious how you guys would see utilizing these, these positions.
I know that, um, I've had recent talks with some of our surrounding school districts and especially since we're headed to our new PBIS program. We've been working a lot with these districts. They have very similar, um, positions and what they are doing is maybe not as much of us, as a facilitator does, but they're handing some of the handling some of the discipline, doing a lot of de-escalation, which is what's happening. They're taking some of the aides and the pairs and then they're training them. And they're taking some of the best of the best and then training them in these practices. And then they're getting to these kids before they're getting discipline problems. So it's more of a preventative measure. And that's how I see it in other districts. They're doing very similar things. So if you would ask me, that's the direction that I'd like to see. I'd like to see someone who's highly skilled, who's good with kids, who wants to build relationships, who uses restorative practices to get kids where we want. So we can get them back to class, learning in the classroom and not worrying about consequences and being punitive. This is more of a, a growing thing and it seems to be working in other districts. And sometimes you just steal good ideas. And I think this is a very good idea to steal. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
So, so that's more in lines with like, what Elizabeth was mentioning, like more of a professional type position. Yeah. High, more highly skilled, highly skilled professional.
We call them paraprofessionals and they are highly, highly skilled, um, and trained, and we provide a lot of that training.
I think we're just looking at someone who would be willing to take the additional training on top of what they already have to be able to take those skills and work with those students. I think someone who's willing to do that and take the training would be well-prepared to take these positions. Tyler, I don't, I know that you were in some of the other districts where they had these positions.
So I can speak to, uh, when I was in Williamsport area school district, we had a, uh, very similar position in the building I was in and, uh, that person was trained, trained in QBS quality behavior solutions. Um, and, and a big focus on building relationships and de-escalating students. So for some of the lower scale behavioral concerns, that person could be dispatched by our central office people at the building and say, hey, so-and-so needs to have a break right now. Can you go check in with that student? Hopefully they've had a relationship, take that student for a walk, get them a break. Um, and, and essentially they would have like a, a caseload of students that they check in regularly. They're just constantly circulating the building, checking in with some of your students who are more frequent flyers with some kind of, uh, behavioral concerns or discipline issues and um, anything that would escalate to the, you know, level of an office referral. Obviously the principal would take care of that, but they were able, able to help mitigate some of the lower level behavior, behaviors proactively. So it was a very beneficial position.
Can you give me a, for instance, or for example, how, what, what type of situation are you talking about that, that you?
Uh, for example, um, so when we, we talk about QBS, there's a staircase, if you will, from calm to crisis. So when a student start to, starts to climb that staircase a little bit and a teacher realizes that student starting to show some of those antecedent behaviors before they have a real issue. They might be able to call the office and say, hey, can you send Mr. Smith down to my room? Johnny needs a break. Um, so that person will be able to go walk in the classroom, whether they sit with them and just provide that support there or offer them, uh, an opportunity to leave the classroom, go for a break, get a drink, take a break out of that setting and then return that student to the classroom. Um, and they would be in constant communication with, uh, the principal, um, just to keep tabs on letting us know where they're at and if they need support additionally. The other thing too, that was great was it was a provided support at our lunches, our recesses. Um, just another, uh, set of eyes, somebody who's built a relationship with some of those more frequent students that have those behavioral concerns and just checking with them in those unstructured settings.
I would also add just, again, not having a facilitator oftentimes when a child has had a minor infraction, taking the opportunity to reteach that child the appropriate behavior. Um, that's a big time, uh, commitment for some of the circumstances. So having the opportunity to have someone available who could have access to our PBI lesson plans. And I know for Mill Hall, we have books that are around each of our expectations. Just to go back with that child, we read the book, reiterate what the expectations are and we teach that behavior would be a huge help in, in, in our building specifically.
I'd love for you to hear from them, I think, there for once, that, that need the support.
It's good.
Yeah. It was great. All right. So I guess what I'm seeking from the board and, you know, obviously with the time crunch, we're doing this whole board at a work session. I would have really preferred to do this through the safety committee and maybe some of the other groups that we have formed, but the time is the, the part that's pushing us on this. So I guess I need to know, is there enough consensus from the board that you would approve next week that we would submit the grant application? I see no reason to leave the dollars on the table. Um, but at the same time, um, support the ideas that we've brought forward to you. Um, again, there's a lot of parameters with the grant and, and we don't want to spend on positions that we don't believe we could have tried if we have to.
I, I've heard enough. I would be a yes vote.
Yes.
So any, anybody opposed to things?
I'm just not in favor of hiring more staff or student population's, uh, decreasing. I just don't think we could hire more staff. I think as I told you the other day, we talked about reducing staff by 10 this year. And as far as I know, we've only reduced it by four.
We've reduced it more than that. Um, but some other needs have come out. We, we've talked about using, you know, a trading up to 10 positions. And then when, you know, we talk with the principals about what we think we can attrite and what they can really give up. And when you look at the schedules done for the students and you look at scheduling and then, um, elementary numbers change. We did, um, cut some elementary sections, but then we also, um, and talking with the principals and saying that, you know, is a class of 28 in second grade feasible? Is a class of 29 in fourth grade feasible? And so, um, we're thinking about those safety things. Some of those came back in, um, into play. And we also did receive some additional funding. I think, was it title one funding? Um, that allowed us to do the class reduction piece. So even though we didn't cut the position, we did get additional funding to, to cover it. So I'm working on a spreadsheet right now, um, with HR to show the total number of positions reduced. And also the total number of dollars, because you don't always, you know, somebody may go out on the top of the scale. You bring somebody in on step one or somewhere below that. Um, but we're working on, um, that for the finance committee to show the exact dollars, um, that went in and went out. So it could be 10 positions when accounted for X number of dollars. May not be exactly 10 positions, but how close are we to that dollar amount? So we're working on cleanup. I've still been appointing positions as, um, much as yesterday. And we still are waiting back from, um, for two other positions to hire.
And Mr. Knopf, I, I, I totally understand, uh, your concerns on, uh, on overall compliments and the number of positions and things like that. But, uh, you know, we do have something that, uh, I think that, uh, Mrs. Blesch could, uh, take some credit for, which is called the, you know, PBM, uh, she can, uh, clear up what that acronym exactly means. But, uh, it's, uh, it's allowed us to be very, very, um, diligent on what we're spending on personnel and, uh, uh, I have enough confidence in the process that if she says that this is going to work, I'm, I'm going to be in favor of it. I, I don't think that, uh, this is going to cause us any problems.
I'm just sitting here remembering back a couple of months ago, we looked at, uh, the budgets for the next couple of years. And I think it was in two years, we're a couple of million dollars in the red and using all our reserve. And we just, we have to start looking at it now. Even though we got an additional million dollars for general use, we have to keep our reserve funding where it's at. We can't just keep spending it down. And we have like four and a half million dollars of research fund funding that's going to be gone. And we have to.
Right. But when we look at, uh, when we look at positions, uh, FTEs are not necessarily FTEs. It's not necessarily apples to oranges. Uh, I mean, you know, retirees are not equal to, uh, new hires. Uh, there's, there's some differences there and I think that's, uh, accounted for in PBM. And, uh, I really, really hate to put Susan on the spot with this, but I think she might agree. Uh, she's going to hate me because I brought this up.
She's shaking her head, Bo.
I'd agree with you in most cases, but if we keep hiring people, uh, I mean theoretically you could be hiring people at, like bachelor's step one, step two perhaps, not step 17. So you have to keep looking at stuff like that too, where we're hiring people from. So, I mean, that, if you hire someone at bachelor's 17, you're not really gaining much when you have a retiree. But bringing up the finance committee, we could have one scheduled for February, or excuse me, September 6th at six thirty.
Uh, Admin, can you help me out here and, uh, tell me that I'm not just talking out my ass here, please?
I think Dr. Martin already, uh, spoke a little bit about it, that we are getting together, uh, with Mr. Kondo and myself and Dr. Martin to look at what was in the plan that was passed in June and where are we currently and what does that mean in overall compliment and dollars?
And I apologize for using an inappropriate word there. That was not my intention.
I didn't hear anything. Dr. Barnhart, how many special education teachers do we hire this summer? And we have two more to go or the two? So when you're hiring 10 special education positions annually, do we hire eight last year? 12 last year. How many year before? It was somewhere close to the same amount. When that happens, you know, we're, we're, we also have, um, I, at least I feel an ethical responsibility to hire the best qualified people for the jobs. And many times, many, many times that is the people with the experience. And, um, we are looking and when we have recommended, I believe, one hire at the top of the scale that I'm aware of in special education. And along with that hire comes the training in, um, specific skillset that something we're trying to train the trainer and train all of our teachers who work with autistic support uh, in that realm. And this person comes with that level of experience. And so I, I think we're on the same page. We have the same concerns and I've said that since I've been here. It's the out years that we worry more and every decision we make in the in years impacts the out years. But sometimes, um, when we're getting the, the, the candidate pool and we're hiring that many people with that certification, I'm just grateful that we're getting the applicants at this point. And, um, I, I feel that we're trying to do the best we can in a situation where we're still looking at a teacher shortage. So, um, but I, I hear you and I, I don't disagree with you. Um, but I, I still feel that those hires would be the best that we can bring to you as a board at this point in time.
Well, I agree. We have to hire the best candidates we can find. But again, we have to look at the budget for a couple of years out and and that's not looking good after about two years.
It's, it's getting better. That's why we want to, um, have some time to get some of the changes and things that have taken place over the last three months aren't reflected in those out years yet. And so we want to make sure we, we have a good pulse on where we are so that there are no surprises.
But continuing hiring more staff does nothing but make those outlying years even closer.
Correct.
We have to be careful.
Correct. I, we are on the same page. However, we have some dollars to spend. We have some initiatives that we're doing. I've heard nothing. But requests from this administrative team, from our teachers, from our parents and from this board that we need to, um, support and make some changes in discipline. And so this we feel would be a way that we could help with some prevention and some addressing some of those things. And, um, having the short timeline to spend the dollars that we have. Um, I really, as a curriculum person, I would love to say to you, let's, let's write that secondary, you know, curriculum and let's get people trained and move that. But we, right now in this upcoming school year, with all the initiatives we have, um, with the new PBS, PBIS launch, um, we don't have the capacity to get that written and implement it within the timeframe of the grant. I, I respect, um, I completely respect your comments and understanding about the staffing. I, I respect, I completely respect your comments and understanding about the staffing.
And talk about discipline, you'll hear more of that when I start talking during the student handbook. Yeah.
So it sounds like we have enough direction to, we can start working on the grant application in those areas.
I agree.
So moving on to section H, we have the work session meeting minutes from last month and the voting meetings minutes from last month. And also the curricular co-curricular meeting minutes, which we went over. Any questions or additional comments on those? Moving on to business, we have our regular bills for payment in the amount of $2,406,898.13. Then there's an agreement between Ori Learning for Transition Curriculum.
Special educations.
Special education, not to exceed $1,845. And then an agreement with CLM Center of Excellence for student resource licenses, not to exceed $7,000. An agreement with New Story for Student Services, which is another outside agency. And moving on to approve the quote from Keystone Advertising for Central Mountain Middle School, Renova and Liberty Curtain Window Film. There were attachments on there showing examples.
Can I have some questions about that? When was that discussed? Did I miss something that is window film? When did we discuss doing it?
We didn't discuss that at the board level. Those were some decisions that the principals wanted to add to their buildings and to the windows. And they had money in their regular fund budget.
That came through the facilities, finance and then back to the board?
Not if it's with general, within general budget, building budget.
Yeah, I, we have, the money for it is in the general fund, which was also budgeted for in their building level budgets. Elizabeth has a question.
Oh, yes. I'm going to try my hardest not to be insulting, to try to be positive, okay? But more is more. And when we look at all the steps that we took when we did the Renova building and community input, board input, staff input, and then all of a sudden we're given this for $15,000. Now, I don't want to sound disrespectful. I don't know the story. It was never discussed. So I would deeply appreciate, since this is not a priority right now, that this be taken off the agenda and it's taken to the facilities committee. So it can be fairly discussed. Because as of right now, I, I, and again, I don't mean to sound disrespectful because I don't know the backstory. But I'm 1,000% opposed to this on multiple levels.
I'm not really opposed to it. I just, I, I really like the way they look. If it's going to look like these pictures we saw, they look really nice. And I think it's going to really add to the aesthetics of the building. I just think that we need to follow certain steps. And I think before we do something of this magnitude, I mean, it's only 15,000, but 15,000 here and 15,000 there adds up. That we need to bring it before facilities and finance figure out what we're paying for. It was only a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the fencing at Renova Elementary. And we had to take that, I believe, from the paving project funds. So we were robbing different funds here not too long ago to pay for stuff. So I just, I think we need to have a certain procedure in place how we're going to pay for stuff.
Maybe I'm wrong, but kind of like the athletics budget and things like that, don't each building have their own budget where the principals are allowed to oversee what they want to spend their monies on that doesn't involve board approval?
Just to be clear, this is, this is item I five, correct?
Yes. It's the exterior of the building. It's not something that's happening on the inside. It's the exterior facade look. And the.
So yeah, that, that, that is totally a matter of cosmetics here. And, you know, based on the very low dollar amount, I wouldn't say I'm opposed to it. But I do have to echo, I believe it was Mr. Knopf's concerns that, you know, 15,000 here, 15,000 there, that could add up.
Well, just to go back to what Tracy said, though, I think each principal does have, have their own individual building budgets and they, they have the discretion to spend it as they see fit. And I don't know that we necessarily, as a board, you know, it might've been nice to have at least, you know, presented to the facilities committee to say, this is what I, this is how I want to spend my, but my voting budget, some of my voting budget money for this. But as far as, as needing us to give it our blessing, I don't necessarily think that that's necessary because it is there for their building, building budget.
Then why is it on the agenda?
Well, Mr. Johnson, the, the question then becomes, is this coming out of their building budget? Or that they already had allocated? Or is this in addition that we're going to be taking out of the general fund?
No, I, I, I'm, I just think, Dr. Martin said a minute ago that it was coming out of.
It's my understanding that the principals wanted to move forward with putting the window, there was window film put on the board, put on many of these. Let me back up. In 2019, 2018, 2018, 2019, without my knowledge or understanding or request, somebody put up like a milky window film stickers on the vestibules at the school, across the school. And I was told that it was paid for by a safety grant because it came up in a safety audit that we didn't want school safety. Nobody should be able to see into the vestibules. The principals had some concerns brought forward that they actually inhibit the view from the inside out. And depending on who you talk to about school safety, some people say you need to be able to see into those vestibules if there is a lockdown or something, police. So it goes, I've heard different, multiple things. What was discussed among some of the principals that I was aware of was that there is film that you can see out, but you can't necessarily see. And it's kind of like a dotted film. And it also promoted school spirit. And they had talked about doing it. I believe Mill Hall Elementary already did it. There, it's a much improved look at Mill Hall Elementary as opposed to the milky white film that looks like you're keeping everybody out, which demonstrates some school spirit. Some of the other principals saw those designs and thought that they liked them. I've seen some of the places too, where you're going to open a door, you can't see out, you're pushing right into another individual at dismissal. So they asked if they could spruce them up, said, do you have the money in your budget? It's budgeted, it's in the general fund within their building budget. And that's where they were taking the funding as far as I'm aware. My, is that inaccurate for any of the requests?
So yes, we do, by procedure, have to approve this because it is a bill, just like we approve every other bill and every other quote. But if it's within their spending allotment for their building.
Well, if it's in, if it's within, within a pre-existing budget, then I have no problem with it. That's, that's discretion of the principal. You know, that's what they want to do with the money they've been allotted. I, I was just worried this was additional spending. But if it's not, if this is already something that's a budget that falls within the budget and doesn't increase our, our outlay, then, then I guess I have no problem with it.
I would still like it to go back to facilities committee because aesthetically, that's a mid-century modern building and that is way over the top. I'm sorry. It is just way to, it's loud, it screams and maybe.
It's awesome.
I'm just saying it is.
I like the way it looks. I really, I really, but if it looks like the pictures, I think it's going to really make the building look nicer and look better. I just, I'm concerned about the process. I think we have a process we need to follow. Even though you're saying it's a building budget, I still think we need to go.
We're actually following the process that's already been in place previously. So the process has been followed.
Then all I'm asking, instead of saying paid for by the general fund, paid for by the building general fund or a building fund, change the wording on it. It says, according to what I'm reading here, it says paid for by the general fund, the general fund.
Well, I think it would be paid for by the general fund. But that's because how the accounting allocation has, has already happened. You know, this is discretionary funds that have been given to the building principals and that's how they choose to spend their money, then, okay, we've already approved that.
I think that's fine, but this is a visual on the exterior of the building.
That looks awesome.
The opinion of the aesthetics, but what I'm trying to say is it should, please take it back to facilities committee because when we look at, we're going to be setting a precedent also that the building, whoever's in charge of that building at that particular time, we're saying they have full control of what the exterior of the building looks like, basically. If they want to paint the brick blue tomorrow because it's in their budget, they can paint it blue. If they wanted, you know, see, does anyone kind of see where I'm going?
And indeed, Ms. Blanche, I, I think that that's probably discretion that they probably have. I mean, we've given them a certain amount of budget money and we've given them discretion to handle the appearance of their building. So I'm not opposed to this.
And I don't think that the superintendent would allow anything to be, to get, to be used, the general fund money, whether it's their budget or not, if it's something that is totally ridiculous. I don't seem, think this, this is, this is bad looking at all. In fact, I think it adds a lot of school spirit to, and, and I, I don't have a problem with it.
I didn't look at this any differently, honestly, than if they chose to have the students use paint from the general fund budget to paint winter scenes for Christmas. It's not a permanent change. It, it, I, do you guys know how long they're expected to last?
Speaking somewhat uneducatedly, but, you know, potentially somewhat educatedly, you know, I've done vinyl work before. I would expect this is probably going to be a two-year process, you know, a two-year life cycle. It might last longer, but that's what I expect this to, you know, any vinyl application would, would last. And I don't think that it's an appropriate use of funds. And personally, I've looked over what these look like and I, I actually really, really like it. I just want to make sure it's not an additional expenditure. And if it's something that the principals are taking out of their operating budget, you know, to promote unity, brand continuity and things like that, hey, all the better.
So when this is done in two years, it goes into a landfill. I just think more is more. Take the concept and the ideas and we can scale it back a little bit.
Actually, precedence has already been made because it has been done previously. So this whole thing about you saying that we need to, that we're going to be setting a precedence, the precedence has already been set.
So Elizabeth, if you'd like to, you can make the motion on Thursday if you want to have it removed.
Oh, I know. I'm sorry. I'm going to be on a train on Thursday and I won't be able to make the meeting. I'm sorry. So I, I just want to make that clear, but I would vote no for this. But thank you all very much for your input. I still think we can do better, but.
All right. Moving on, H6 is the Learning 2025 Network. Again, demonstration systems.
So we talked about this last year. We were part of it last year. It cost $14,000. There was a reduction in the cost. This has been something we've been actively participating in this network. We joined this network because it was something that was new. It came out and it was on, it's focused on future-focused schools. And the mission and the networking that is aligned with the Learning 2025 Network is directly aligned with our current comprehensive plan and our current comprehensive plan goals. So we saw this as a support to getting us where we want to be with the comp plan goals. So that was an annual fee. We did utilize Esther funding for that. And this would be renewal, but it is renewed at $3,000 less.
And then there's the approval for the quote from Pearson for student testing platforms for $10,664, like they're mental health screeners.
Yeah, I actually spoke with Dr. Barnhart and therefore assessment tools for students. Our school psychologist, you mentioned.
Yeah, it's, it's a web-based platform so that the school psychs and the speech therapists can administer their tests electronically and then also score them, which will make it much more efficient and effective. We currently are still down a school psych and we contract with an outside agency. So this is just a way to help our current school psychs who are with us in person be a little bit more efficient.
Thank you.
And then we have a quote from dot com therapy.
We're currently down a speech, we're down a speech therapist and the IU who we contract for speech services just lost their speech person. So in order to be prepared for meeting student needs in the beginning of the year, we believe we need to do this contract. We, this is not our favorite way to do it. And we're still actively seeking people to fill those positions. Again, we're not the only district in, in Straits with finding speech pathologists and speech teachers. But if you know anyone, please send them our way.
And then there'll be a settlement that'll be discussed in exact session.
All right, before we move on from item I, I would like to go back to I six, if I may, Madam President.
Go ahead.
I have no problem whatsoever with this, but I would like to ask Vice President Mr. Elling if he's okay with this because I know he's previously shown some concerns regarding this.
Yes. I will say this, Bo, whenever I did go down to DC and I had this presented, it, I had no inkling and I didn't have the feeling that they were pushing in the way that I had been thinking they were going. The only thing that scared the crap out of me with this whole thing is the fact that they're dealing with artificial intelligence in the future. And that scares the heck out of me because of what I'm, what I saw down there. I mean, it's the way of the future and the way things are going, but it still scares me because I can see AI is going to be a game changer for students. And it's, that makes me nervous. But the other stuff, I didn't see anything pointed out there. So I, I'm good with this.
Okay, I just wanted to revisit that then.
Nope, I get it.
Might, might not be my position to bring that up, but I knew you had concerns.
Oh, I had big concerns.
I, I think that some of the value that we found in this is that sharing practices and listening to other school districts share with us how they've addressed some of the issues such as a profile of a graduate or how are they measuring the skills that students are going to need to be successful in jobs in the future? And if anybody's ever looked at what are employability skills outside of academics? What are the skills that employers are looking for? Those, that's a lot of the focus, the higher critical thinking skills, the collaboration. And then how are school districts measuring those things or making sure that students are having experiences and opportunities with that? So I, I found a lot of value and I know several folks here had some value in going and seeing other school districts, what they've done with it, not just in Pennsylvania, but it's a nationwide network. And so a lot of, of also what this network does is they'll say, oh, Keystone Central is a rural district in Pennsylvania who is striving to focus on students that are learning or students as a co-author of their own journey. And we know a similar school district in the state of Washington or Oregon who is working on the same things. And so sharing some of those strategies and ideas. And even following our presentation, I had a superintendent from, I believe it was Nebraska or Oklahoma, came and talked with me and she said, you know, your district has many of the similar challenges that we have and a lot of things you're doing, we're doing. And if you ever need to talk about some of the things and we learn some of the pitfalls and some of the things to avoid along with the strategies, that's where I found the value is how could we learn from, from other school districts, collaborate and then come back and figure out how to apply that to our own district and our own learning?
And Dr. Martin, I certainly appreciate that. And I, I think it's, it's a great thing. I, I think it's something we need to move forward with. I just wanted to give Vice President Mr. Elling the opportunity to close the loop, uh, you know, from previous comments. And I, I think that that has happened here, so we can move forward.
Yeah, Bo, trust me, if there was a problem with this, whenever I saw this on the agenda, I would have been all over it.
Moving on to our personnel agenda. We have various leaves of absence, unemployment. It's nice to see support positions on here, quite a few of them.
And bus drivers.
Bus drivers. Yeah. Very good to see. I saw that today.
How, how is the bus driver list compared to previous years? Are we up this, we have enough or still need more?
To be determined. We ask, we ask daily what the, the school year looks like and we're happy to see the list that's on there and they are still hiring for anyone listening, but so far we think we may be okay, but we're monitoring it daily.
All right. And then there's some game workers and then our professional hires. Anybody have any questions on any of those?
I do want to call out something that is changed with the DPLs. So the contract that we have with ACCE allows up to 14 DPLs. And the board was very specific that no more than 14 should ever be determined in one year. The contract doesn't state in which subject areas. And so most recently, we've had um, some resignations in the DPL area. And what Megan had asked is if we could move to having instead of two math DPLs, one elementary, one secondary. If we go elementary, middle school and high school, especially in a curriculum year, which where we're implementing new curriculum, that the support for the curriculum and the district program leaders are in math. So it's no additional dollars in total. Um, because it's a flat, it's a specified rate and we're within the 14, but I just wanted to call out to you that there is a difference. We're going from two to three in the area of math. And I believe we still have a, a DPL position to fill in the fine arts.
Any other additional questions or comments on personnel? Moving on to curricular, co-curricular, we were athletics and student activities personnel agenda. Volunteers and game workers.
There, there was also a nullify of employment. We had a candidate accept a position with us, uh, was appointed and then took a position with another school district um, within about a week or two weeks. I got a call from another administrator saying, sorry. Um, anyway, that's the, what the nullification is about.
And then we have our student activities report for fourth quarter. And our booster club. Presidents, their officers for the 2022, 2023 year. Any questions on those? So moving on, the last one is our student handbooks. So Mr. Noth, I got a feeling you have questions or comments.
The last few years, I've heard a lot about discipline problems, bullying problems throughout the district. Now I'm back in a position where I'm hopefully I can do, help do something about it. I think it starts with these handbooks and I think we have to make sure that the handbooks are followed by the students and by our administrators and staff. So if it says no hoods, it means no hoods. If it says no phones, it means no phones. And we have to make sure it's district wide, just not classroom wide and have the teachers have them decide if they want to have a phone in this class, but not next. That's something we have to afford and force. In fact, I saw last night, I think it was this Grant School District banned all electronic devices in their school on their buses and doing after school activities. So yeah, that's something like that. I'm, I don't know what they're going to accomplish by it. But we have to take a firmer stance on phones and classes. Like the only part that I was disappointed that I didn't see anything about hats. And I don't believe you can be wearing a hat in school for a couple of reasons. I think it's distracting. And if something happens and we have to identify a student, it's harder to identify somebody through our camera system if they're wearing a hat. But I know I saw the hoods are no longer allowed to be up. But I think hats need to be addressed, especially some of, I mean, the trucker hats sometimes aren't too bad, but I know some kids that wear a hat. I don't know what the technical term is, but they look like a Canadian bounty hat with the flaps down over their ears, the flaps on the front. I know kids wear those all day in school. Stuff like that, we, I think we should address, but I just wanted to make sure we enforce the handbook uniformly across the entire district.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of agree with you, Butch, as far as the, the cell phone thing goes, I think that and I know you get pushed back from parents and I don't know how I ever got through 13, 12 years of school without a cell phone, but to call home apparently was a different world then, but I guess I, I think we need to be consistent with that, with the cell phone. And I'm not, I'm not being critical of anybody sitting here. But if, if I'm a teacher and I still don't know why we can't just tell them to check the thing right at the door. Put it in a box or something and, and if you want to get it on the way out, get it on the way out. But it would be extremely distracting to me and not, you know, to have, tell the kids to put them away. Yeah, okay, put them away. But you know, they're still going to be sitting back there and fool around with them and it's just distracting. And I know it's, it's, it's a battle. I, I, I get it. I, I know that it's, it's but you know, some of the kids, they, they just pretty much and along those same lines, when I look at the, the school-wide positive behavior, they list the five Bs in there. Be safe, be responsible, be respectful, be kind and be professional. The one that standard stands out to me in there is be respectful. And I know that you guys as, as building principals, especially on the secondary, deal with that every single day, the lack of respect that you, that they're shown to the teachers that are shown to you, they're shown to anybody that's an authority in the building. And, and I'm certainly hoping that this, this PBIS thing works, especially at the high school and the middle school. Because to me, there's, there's no excuse for kids to be disrespectful to any adult in a building. And I know you can, you can make excuses for them, you know, it's COVID, it's this, it's that. I don't give a crap, to be honest with you. They, there should be no excuse for that. And, and I know it's difficult. And, and I, I just, I think that the consequences need to be there for these, for these guys that don't want to, don't want to cooperate, don't want to do their work, don't want to listen. I just think that, that you, you as principals, you guys have a tough job. I know it guaranteed. I know. And I, I, you're in a really tough spot because a lot of times your hands are tied because we can't do this, we can't do that. And I get that, but if we, if we're going to have this stuff in the handbook, then we need to be consistent across the board. Especially with the cell phones, especially even more so in, in, in some of the attire and some of that stuff. Some of the way that these kids come just dressed to school dressed is ridiculous.
Like a crow.
And the, and the, you know, the hoods and all that kind of stuff. It's just, there's, there's no place for that kind of stuff. And we need, we need to take control back. And, and I'm, I'm not saying here that I have all the answers because I certainly don't. Because a lot of things that we should be able to do as far as consequences and discipline. You know, the bats have been taken out of your hands. I know that. And it's, it's really difficult. But I just think the consistency across the board is, is very important. As far as, as what, if you, if they, the expectations are the same in every classroom. That's extremely important. You have to have, you have to have consistency uh, across every classroom. And I, and I don't know that that's, that's happening. And I'm not, again, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody here. Because it's, it's just, it is what it is, but but.
That's all I'm asking that we, we start from day one and we have consistent acceptance of these handbooks. And we follow the handbook to a T from no matter what school you're at, no matter what class you're at, it's district wide, building wide, we follow it all. And the only thing else I'd add, definitely you said about respect. Not only respect the teachers, respect the administration, to respect each other. The kids don't respect each other. So how do they, they don't respect themselves. So, and that's what we, some of the things we're going to have to try to.
And, and one of the battles, and one of the battles that, that these folks here in this room are facing is not only that they don't get respect from the kids, they don't get respect from the homes and the parents. And that's where it all starts. And I totally understand that. And that's, you know, you're, you're not only battling the kids, but when you call home, what are you going to get? I know what you're going to hear. You're not going to get support. You're going to get pushback from them. And I, I know that. And that's just, that's what makes things so tough. Because, you know, if you were, if the kid was, some kid told me to go F myself, which you guys hear probably on a daily basis. And I called home and I told the parent that. Then they, they would say, you're absolutely right. I'm going to nail him when he gets home. But that doesn't happen. Probably, I don't know, half or three quarters of the time, you get just the opposite whenever you call home. And that's where the crux of the whole thing is. Because if you had support, you know, if you call and say, he's had a cell phone out five times.
Well, he needs to have that cell phone because I'm at an emergency.
I know that's what he's going to say. Instead of, okay, then he's going to, it's going to stay at home. If you said that, you probably fall out of your chair, Nick. If, if somebody said that to you and said that, that they had your, their, your support. And, you know, I've been there, I've lived it. So I know what you're dealing with. So it's, um, it's tough. And and hopefully if you put this thing in and people are consistent with it and you hold your teachers to that, that's important. You hold them to, to that, those standards. And you say, this is what it's going to be and this is what I expect to see. If I walk into your room and I see three kids sitting back there playing games on their phone. Or you know, sitting there telling the teacher, I'm not doing it or whatever. Then then that, that should be addressed to the teacher because you, you need to, they need to say, this is what my expectations are and everybody should have the same. So that's it. I'm going to shut up.
So I have a little bit of a issue myself. Um, but pointing to what Jeff was saying, you know, oh, you know, I might have an emergency or something like that. Well, guess what? We just invested in blooms. Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, parents are going to be able to get in contact with teachers. Not only that, they'll be able to get in contact with the offices. Okay. Also, parents can call the office if they have a problem. That's what secretaries are there for, to answer those questions and pass those, that information on to the principals or whoever needs to know. Um, so you know, that's, that's what I feel about that. Um, however, I will say this, going to that learning 2025. Okay. One of the things that they pointed out is how people do their jobs today. Um, if someone's at a job and they have a question about something or they're not able to figure out what's going on, what's the first thing that you might do? Hey, Google. You use your cell phone. Okay. Unfortunately, that's the way things are going. Okay. If there was a way of, hold on a second. Had to get rid of that, you know? Anyway, um, it's just one of those things that that's the way of the future that's coming down. The problem is how do we control the, playing the games and doing all of that? That's, that's the problem. All right. Now, the other thing that I noticed, um, I know we're talking about the elementary. However, the middle school and high school. Okay. In there, I do not see anything about wearing costumes. Okay. Um, I think that needs to be addressed in this handbook. All right. Cause students that come to school dressed up in costumes, okay? It's nothing but one, it's distracting. Okay. It interferes with daily process of the education. Okay. Those type of situations need to be dealt with. All right. So, um, and I know it's happened. So it's one of those things that we, we don't need to be playing that kind of game, not in this district. So, all right, I'm done.
So I believe just my response, I believe the incident you're talking about, I'm aware of, and I've also with the middle school, Central Mountain Middle School, I've talked with Dave and the Katrina at least about that one. And we did look into, to that situation. And if there, it was, as far as I'm aware, was addressed and then with the student, if not, I know on the day by the teacher and then the next day by the administration. And that fell under some other infractions that were already in the handbook. I don't know if it was specifically called out as costumes, but it fell into some other things, disruption to the educational process, probably, right? So Butch, can we go back to your comments too about consistent implementation and?
That's the most important thing. I wanted to talk about elementary school, right? I was talking about the whole, right, damn it.
No, fair, firm and consistent.
We have to be consistent from every building through every classroom to every student.
So we are all talking the same language. So principals, how many of you like, and Nick, I know you're making a big launch with PBIS. Do you want to speak to at all with the things that have been going on with your PBS teams or any of the principals about your PBIS teams? And how you are expecting that to, to roll out for consistency?
I agree with you, Butch, because at this point, um, we have seen a rise, especially looking at data or Swiss data in the discipline. And I think some of that has to do with some consistency. I think there's other factors you could throw in there, but at this point I'm tired of looking at the other factors. We need to move on. We need to move forward. Um, PBIS, I have a really great team. Um, it hasn't really been implemented with fidelity in the past. So it's going to be something that we're going to push forward this year. I think there's a lot of opportunities for our teachers. One, to be consistent because it is across the entire school. And there's certain criteria that we must follow. There's certain things that they have to do. So I think you're speaking exactly what we're talking about that way. It's a push that I need to make sure that we happen. The other assistant principals need to do that. But I think it's something that's going to be a great tool to see some of that discipline go down. It's not just about, um, I think it gets a bad rap sometimes. I think people seem to think that it's about, we're going to give a ticket because you do everything you're supposed to do. No, it's about following the rules, being those three Bs that you talked about, Jeff, and doing that all the time and treating each other with respect. And that's really what it comes down to. Because when you talk about graduating someone from Central Mountain High School or from Bucktail, we want to be productive citizens, but more importantly, we want them to give back to the community and be kind to one another. And I think that's really what it comes down to. And we can talk about all these things, but it's about being kind. And we've lost it somewhere. So I think this program and especially the teachers, because it can't just be about me talking about it. They need to be on board too. They need to just push being kind to one another, model that. And then hopefully that starts to rub off. I'm not going to lie to you. It's not going to change overnight. It's going to take a little bit, but it's certainly a great start. And this program is built on consistency and, and that's really where we have to go with it.
So I can reiterate exactly what Nick said. Um, and even with my steps this summer, I've been meeting with my leadership team of teachers and my school-wide positive behavior team of teachers. Some of what you alluded to, um, August 8th, happening with getting schedules out, being in the community, that came out of those meetings. Some of what you alluded to, um, August 8th, happening with getting schedules out, being in the community, that came out of those meetings. So all those pieces, we've developed some things for consistency. We've developed actually the plan of how we're gonna roll things out, and how we're gonna, you know, reboot that within a couple of weeks, things like that. Um, the other thing too, we've also identified the team of students that we wanna have on that leadership group, so that they can also support that process.
So there are plans, um, actually our initial in-service day is focused specifically on the tiered system of support that we showed you a couple of months ago, and really diving deep into the instructional strategies for the academic side, and the behavior, social, emotional strategies, and the supports that are in place, but also how important the tier one is. And PBIS is part of that tier one. So, again, I feel like we're speaking the same language, and I hear, hear what you're saying. The cellphone policy that I'm looking at says that they have to put them away when they're in class unless they have permission to get them out. And I think kind of with some of the things that Roger's saying is, if we're teaching people to be responsible citizens, teaching students to, to be responsible citizens, there is a way that you can have a device on your person and still be responsible with it. And unless they're practicing it, and we're modeling it, and giving them a chance to do it, we, I mean, by just, let's not deal with it because it's distraction. I think I'd love to say that, but I don't know that that's really gonna work when we know that the minute they leave school and they're everywhere else. So I, I feel like modeling and teaching them in school, there's some of the expectations that will happen, you know, for you. If you go get a job, you don't even have to be a graduate. The kids that have a job and they're on their phone the whole time, um, you know, are using it inappropriately, there's consequences for that, um, while you're a student, as well as when you're, you know, an adult in the workforce and so forth. So, I'd love to say, hey, let's not give it to them, let's just take it away, but I don't know that that's a reality of in 2022. And so trying to help them learn how to be digital citizens, as well as good citizens all the way around, is probably where we should be going as a future-focused school. And, um, I guess, I see Elizabeth has some questions, so I'll, I'll pause.
Thank you all for the discussion, it's fantastic, it really is. But it's like the cookie in the cookie jar. Don't eat the cookies, okay? It's called Classroom Etiquette. I think it did a stellar job on the handbook, considering the limitations that public school districts are given. It's Classroom Etiquette. It's the teachers and the principals. I fully trust them on this, that they are going to collectively show the kids, let the kids experiment, when they get wrong, they're wrong. But it's classroom adequate, adequate etiquette, and they will get it. They will get it. Not all, but we can only hope for most. And I, I think we're, we're gonna, we'll get there.
Well, and the consistency is key, as Butch said, because if, if five teachers are enforcing it fully, and then ten teachers are, just don't want the battle, so they won't even try, then, you know, we're not supporting each other as colleagues, and we're not supporting the system, so.
How do we deal with that? I mean, that, that's the problem.
I, I've got an issue with, uh, with this, and I, I totally support everything that's in the handbook, and it's, you know, it's best effort, it's the best that we can do. We really can't do anything better than what we're doing here. We can't do anything better in this school system. We are providing, you know, model behaviors, and we're, you know, with our PBIS system and so forth, you know, we are trying to, to model what it means to be an exemplary citizen. The problem is, is that when our students walk outside of our walls, they are seeing things, and this is totally protected by First Amendment rights and things like that. They are seeing expletives and even vulgar messages, uh, and decals on the back of people's vehicles, and yard signs, and things like that. So how do we compete with that? How, you know, when, when our own community is, uh, you know, potentially not modeling best practices, and I, I'm being kind when I say that, how do we compete with that?
No, I, Bo, you're absolutely correct, it's, it's all over the world, it's all over the world. The beauty of choices, and I fully believe the, the administration, the principals, teachers, that they're trying to give the children, students, every possible chance to make choices and understand the consequences. And it's part of growing up. It, it takes a long time, but, um, you know, it's a worldwide problem.
And in terms of Section L on our agenda, I don't think we can do any better. I really don't think we can. We have done best effort here. But we cannot control the larger environment.
I think that our district is very fortunate that we have board members who are supportive of what we're doing in education. I think every board member we have is here for the right reasons. And your support with the handbooks being approved supports the principals who are dealing with it every day. Because when parents wanna argue and fight, and, you know, dispute the consequences that are assigned to the infraction, the principal's support is the board-approved handbook. And so with your continued support, I, I feel like that's what you can do in your role as a legislator, a local legislator, is, you know, you're setting policy, and the handbook is aligned to the policy, and outlines procedures to uphold the policies that is set, are set by this board. And so I would just first thank you, um, because I, I do truly believe that you're all here to support education, and that you do believe in the mission of public ed. So if, if there aren't any content changes that need to be made between now and next week, um, what I'd like to do is take out all of the strike-throughs and give you a final copy um, for next week that would be approved without the strikers.
You put something in about hats again, and it was taken out, it was in, it used to be something in there years ago.
Yeah, that was decided one, two years ago. Um, would any of you like to talk about the hats, as you, the ones that deal with it on a regular basis of, if it's worked or not worked, and what the rationale was? Dave?
What are you fighting there, Mike? Give it to Nick, throw him to the wolves.
Not hearing any administrator wanting to comment on this, I think that, I think that historically, we, uh, we made the, made the best of a bad situation there, and, uh, or not even a bad situation. We just made the best of what we had in front of us. And I think it worked out well. So I don't think there's any real reason to change that language.
I will piggyback a little bit on what Bo said. I agree with what you're saying, Butch, when you talk about if it becomes an issue where it's hard to identify a student on the camera. I think that becomes more of a safety issue as opposed to anything else. Um, in those particular situations, that would be a hat, it's an inappropriate hat to wear. Um, right now, the majority of the kids, I'm not telling you that doesn't happen, it is dealt with when it does. Um, they have to have a hat on, it has to be appropriate as far as it's not covering their face, and then what is on the hat, at least written on the hat, has to be appropriate also. I know it's the same thing at the middle school level, and at Bucktail, we don't like, the fish hooks can't be on the hat, and things of that nature. We base everything that way on safety. There are some times when there's a student who wears a hat, and it becomes, and I'm not saying this is all the time, Butch, at all, but there's a student, and it, it's a safety mechanism for them. Some kids feel a lot safer that way. To me, if it's not interrupting what's happening in the learning environment in the classroom, and it's not causing disruption, I'm okay with it that way. I am not, though, if it becomes a safety issue, or it in fact does distract from the learning environment. Um, when those things happen, that's when it is addressed. So to me, um, for lack of a better way of putting it, it's probably not the hill that I would die on. There's a lot of other things I'd really like to clean up first, and as long as you're not distracting someone else, and it's appropriate, and it's safe, that, then I'm, I'm okay.
There is a, a line on page 28, too, that says, "The administration reserves the right to make the final determination as to whether clothing or jewelry is inappropriate for school and/or a disruption to the school process." So I think that this, the board approving that language gives the administrators some authority to manage it as they see fit, um, with, with instructional process. Dave, did you wanna add anything? I know you wanted to. Okay, wow, go team.
Hey, I wear a hat 95% of the time, most of me now, but I have no problem, I'm just worried about security issues with.
We, we did go to no, we did not, we weren't fighting with hoods either, is that two years ago? And we changed it because we said, look, the hoods did become an issue when we were, and so we did go back to, the hoods have to come down when you come in the building. And, um, so, been kind of playing with that a little bit in there. I know we grew up with hats, or you take it off when you go to buildings, a sign of respect, you don't wear it at the dinner table. And, you know, and, again, I think with all the other issues that they're dealing with, is that the one that we need to spend? Because how much time would you say you were spending arguing with kids about hats, and kids getting sent to the office, and teachers fighting with kids about wearing a hat or not wearing a hat? Some teachers are, some teachers aren't.
It was a significant amount of time. I know this, Butch, that I, I do not know, at least at Central Mountain High School, that there was ever an issue that we could not identify a student because of a hat. Now, that did happen because of hoods, and that's why we revisited that when we talked about the handbook this year and decided, no, the hoods are gonna have to go, but it, it has become a safety issue. I think that's something that we can always revisit every year. And if at any point it does get to, okay, this is starting to become a distraction, or it's hard for us to identify, then yeah, I, I do agree with you. I, I think as long as it's a safety, we're okay safety-wise, we're all right. But in the past year, two years, there hasn't been one that I can recall where we couldn't identify a student because of a hat. I, I actually wanna get back to the, uh, consistency part. All right, um, I just wanna make sure that our teachers are also modeling the behavior of proper cellphone etiquette. These ideas, I'm not so naive as to think that there are not teachers in our classrooms now that go in there and say, okay, go do this assignment, and then they sit up there in front of the class, and they're doing Facebook, or playing games on their cellphone, or doing shopping, okay? Whenever you're supposed to be teaching, you should be teaching, okay? And I just wanna make sure that as far as the consistency goes, that our administrative team is looking out for situations like that, and that they are addressed. Because if students see that teachers are being dealt with for inappropriate use, then I think, um, that might set a precedence and let the, uh, students know, okay, well, hey, maybe this isn't okay.
Mr. Alley, I think that goes to the axiom of, uh, you know, where some people think it's a matter of, uh, do as I say, but not do as I do, where it should really be do as I say and do what I do.
Exactly.
David, did you have some comments?
Oh, yeah, a slightly different topic. I noticed that it, this, one of the handbooks states that students should have no expectation of privacy in their use of devices. I, I think that's referring to school district devices as well as personal devices. I don't, I don't, my question, I think maybe is for the district attorney. I don't think it's appropriate to say the students have no expectation of privacy in the use of their personal devices. It's my understanding that, like, my children have cell phones that are on my account, but I can't see what's on their devices unless I'm like a police officer as a warden to see what's on their devices. So, so I, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's legally correct, so that, that's why I'm asking the question. And then also, I noticed on the previous page that there's comment that, uh, there are sound recordings made in the school district, as in addition to video recordings. And in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I know that it is illegal to record sounds, you know, conversations of people. And I'm not sure if that applies to school districts or not, but it might. So, so in regard to those two things, I, I guess I would be looking for confirmation from the district attorney that it's okay for us to be doing those two things.
David, I could probably address, uh,
I, I don't, yeah, I don't know, that's what I'm saying. I think these are questions for the attorney. I don't wanna make any assumptions in those, in regard to this.
Right, and, and I, I, I think we need to escalate that list there, but I think I can address both of those. Uh, regarding the use of personal devices, uh, I think that anything that does not traverse our network, like if they are on cellular data and not on Wi-Fi, that might be protected. We may not have access to that. Uh, we may not have any right to have access to that. If it traverses our network, then we obviously do have right to, to any of that, unless it was, you know, if it was encrypted or some way, some way other protected, that becomes a legal gray area. And I deal with this all the time.
Handbook should be changed to reflect that case.
Regarding the, the other matter regarding audio recordings, you're entirely right. Now, it, it is illegal to record audio in any way unless you have posted appropriate signage stating that audio is being recorded as part of the surveillance effort. Uh, you need to post signs stating that audio and video is being recorded. Uh, there's no expectation of privacy regarding video. However, audio is a different situation.
That's a page, uh, 34 of the high school.
Thank you. So, um, was that something that has carried over from other years, or was that changed? It's been carried over, which the handbooks were reviewed by attorneys in the past. This wasn't a review this year with the changes.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say, I don't know that they're recording anything else other than, than the bus, bus cameras. And that didn't used to be the case.
Those, those are signed, right? There's, there's actually documentation to show that.
I, I believe in the bus, there is, uh, signs saying you're being audio and video recorded. I think this, uh, more, more closely correlates to, uh, you know, within our facilities themselves. Do, uh, does our surveillance system record audio? And if it does, that needs to be signed appropriately.
It does not.
It doesn't.
In the schools, it does not, the buses do, and it is posted on the buses.
But would it be possible to update the handbooks to state that the recordings are done on the buses so that folks know? And I'm not saying every parent is going to read this in detail, but if I read this as a parent, I would be concerned.
Yeah.
Because it's a little bit.
I don't see any issue with reflecting that. So it's in the transportation section, is that where that, I'm trying to find the page you said.
Let me get back to that. Uh, in, in the, uh, the one in regard to the electronic devices is page 34 in the high school manual. And I'm looking for the page that has the, uh, comments about the recording of sounds.
So is the expectation of privacy. Chad, I'm trying to think, is that more because that they're utilizing our network? Even if they have their own device, but they're utilizing our network, we have like the securely and some other things that could be identified because they're using our network. So securely, if I'm saying that we have two different, um, tools that I believe we are using, if someone were to search a website or type some keywords that it does an algorithm that shows that maybe this is dangerous, right? And it, um, we have an email, it sends an email alert that a student is on this device utilizing or accessing inappropriate content. So even if it's not the school device, if it's their own device, but they're on our network, that catches that, right? So I, from, from what my understanding is, that's what that's referring to. And I could probably look at our principals and say, how many times have you, um, collected a, Chad said yes, as long as it's not encrypted. Sorry, Elizabeth.
Yes, uh, yeah, Dr. Martin, that, that's exactly the case. Uh, you know, we are responsible as a district for any traffic whatsoever that reverses our network. Unless it's encrypted. If it's encrypted, well, then. Unless it's encrypted. If it's encrypted, well, then, then we kind of have it out because we don't have an ability to identify what that traffic looks like. We can't classify it. We can't rate it. We can't block it. We can't do anything with it. But anything that's in the clear, that traverses our network, yes, we are responsible for that legally.
So as far as.
Chad can verify that. I think he'll agree.
Yeah, he did. He just didn't have a mic, Bo.
Okay, so I'm looking at the recording item too. Yeah, that is page 28 and 27. It looks like that is actually under the transportation.
Under transportation.
Yeah, right. I did not notice that. Okay.
Okay. Does that work then?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's good.
Okay. I know there are times when students do, they turn over their cell phones, but that doesn't, and I think the principals try to get them to share the content on the phone or get the parents to help with that if, if that was kind of where you were going to. And sometimes the evidence on the phone, there was a crime committed with that cellphone and it does get turned over to the police.
Right. It would have to be, you know, they would need a warrant to access the phone information. So if it's their own phone and they're using a cellular network, they have every right to be expect to have privacy on their own phone using a cellular network. But the policy doesn't.
That is correct. If they're not traversing a, a district network, yes, then that expectation of privacy is maintained.
But the policy doesn't state that, though, I guess is the point.
Well, the policy is, you know, the policy is district policy and, you know, anything that is law, either state or federal, supersedes our policies. So I guess that's where that comes, where that comes down to. You know, if we've not made it clear and there is governing law that supersedes our policy, then that defines the legal process.
I feel like it should be made clear because I feel like we're intentionally trying to lie and mislead parents and students in regard to their rights to privacy when they're using a personal electronic device. It doesn't seem appropriate to leave it ambiguous. It seems like the intent of leaving it ambiguous is to be dishonest towards the parents and the students. It just doesn't feel appropriate to me.
Is your recommendation to delete that sentence or to have an alternate sentence?
Or to maybe add something like no expectation of privacy when using district wifi and district electronic devices.
If I could make a recommendation, I would, I, I know that we're, we're under time constraints to get the handbooks printed. But I would recommend that we refer this to Attorney Bollinger for further review.
And that's not our policy. That's just the guide under the handbook. So that's not taken verbatim out of our policy. So we can add that sentence in. So that wouldn't be changing our policy to add a clarifying statement so that people understand that if they're using our district wifi or our district device, that
No expectation.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Or the district network wifi device.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we, that would be sufficient. That wouldn't necessarily need to go have Dottie check it out because it's not referring to an actual policy.
I just understand David's concerns about the ambiguity. That's, that's the only reason I would suggest to go to legal counsel.
Wouldn't that be addressed by that last sentence where the part that's added, it says if technology is needed, the student will have a use of a KCSD issued device. So it's defining the device as being our device. If it's our device, it has to be on the website. If it's on the website, it is.
So it talks about personal cell phones too.
I think what I'll do, so policy, cellphone, the electronic device policy was last revised in 2016. And so what I'd like to do is just double-check the language in that policy, which I don't think we need to take everybody's time to do that right now. But if it's okay with the board, I will check on that and see if we can come up with a happy suggestion. I think the suggestion that was made, I would be comfortable with, make some clarifications. And I could email that to the full board maybe by the end of the day, Monday, so that you would be able to see that change or note that change. And it sounds like you're okay with the idea that the, the audio was under the transportation and it is posted on the buses. You're good with that? Are there any other changes that the board wishes to see before we make any other revisions? Well, obviously the vote isn't until next week. So if you think of something, you know how to get in touch with me and we'll do our best. And again, thank you for your support in, in supporting the handbooks and the policies that are set forth because it does make their jobs easier to manage. All right. That is the end of our agenda. I want to change a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
One thing, I'd like to have, if Tracy hasn't done it, advertise the meeting for, finance meeting for September 6th at 6:30. I think it's already been advertised, but could you just? Yeah, the normal.
Do you want to meet before that? Well, if we're getting close, right? September 6th, that gives us a little bit more time to, to firm up some hires and, and get you some accurate numbers.
I don't know if we could do it prior to that because we have to advertise it and everything else. So.
Okay.
I think it's, it could have already been advertised as the normal meeting, but this double check, if not, can we advertise it? So.
And that is open to all board members as well and the public, right?
What time is that, Butch?
6:30.
Okay.
Sorry, Butch. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
I don't believe it was the second there, Madam President, but I will.
I did. I don't think you heard it, Bo.
Okay.
We did. Thank you.
All right. I'll take it. Let's go.
We'll take a five-minute.